Good morning, good morning. God bless you. Happy May 13th to everyone. This is a blessed day. Some great people were born on this day, and we give God glory and honor for all of those who have made birthdays. Let us bow our heads. We're in the book of Job this morning. We're going to do Job 19, 20, 21, and if there's time, Job 22. Let us bow our heads. Gracious God our Father, we thank you for another day that you have blessed us. Another day, Father God, that you have covered us with your blood. Father God, so many are troubled and so many are burdened, but God, there are still so many that rejoice in you today because they realize that the joy of you, Father, is their strength. We've learned, Philippians, Father God, that whatsoever state we are in, we have learned to be content. So God, we thank you for being our Lord, our Savior, and our God. It is in Jesus' name that we pray now with thanksgiving. Amen. Amen. And as we come to our Bible study, I just want to say to each and every one of you, reading the Word of God one time is not enough. It is so important for us to go back and to read his word over and over and over again. And it's also very good and necessary and important for us to learn how to read his word with others. And that's why we come together and we have Bible study so that we can be enlightened to the word. Because I can read it, and I read it by myself, but when I'm reading it and studying it with someone else, it just seems to have so much more essence. So I want all of you to tune in and tune in with us as we go through Job 19 chapter. Then Job answered and said, "How long will ye vex my soul and break me in pieces with words? These ten times have ye reproached me; ye are not ashamed that ye make yourselves strange to me; and be it indeed that I have erred; my error remaineth with myself. If indeed ye will magnify yourselves against me and plead against me my reproach, know now that God hath overthrown me and hath compassed me with his net." And the seventh verse for this morning, "Behold, I cry out of wrong; but I am not heard; I cry aloud; but there is no judgment." As we read Job 19 this morning, verses 1 through 7, these verses are talking about Job is complaining of unkind usage. Remember, he is talking now, and Bildad in chapter 18 reprove Job. He's telling him all these things, and that the snare is laid for him in the ground and a trap for him in the way. He's still believing that Job has sinned. And when we hear that Job has sinned, it becomes a problem because Job knows in his heart that he has not done this. So Job is now complaining of unkind usage, that they're saying things again that is not of God. And so as we read it, the friends have blamed him as a wicked man because he was so afflicted. All these things have happened to you, Job. It has to be that you have done something. Here he describes their unkindness. He's telling them, wait a minute now. Ten times, you see verse 3? "These ten times have ye reproached me; ye are not ashamed that ye make yourselves strange to me?" Otherwise, you know, you're my friends, but it's like I don't even know you now. So as we're reading, it says, "harsh language from his friends greatly adds to the weight of the afflictions that Job is encountering." So yet it is best not to lay it to the heart lest we harbor resentment. Our own friends will come and say things to us. All of you are aware of that. We've all had some experiences, amen? If you have it, keep living. That some friend or relative will say something that will hurt your very heart. Your intent was not there, you didn't mean it, but they take it a different way, and they feel that you must be at fault. Amen? And so I hope that we will learn from this that, as I said, trials, tribulations, disappointments are not all because we have erred or sinned. Rather, we need to look to our friends and look as Job is doing, who endured the contradictions of sinners against himself. He still listened to them, but he still kept the faith. As we're reading verses now, 8 through 22. "He had fenced up my way that I cannot pass; and he had set darkness in my paths; he has stripped me of my glory and taken the crown from my head; he has destroyed me on every side, and I am gone; and my hope hath he removed like a tree. He hath also kindled his wrath against me; and he counted me unto him as one of his enemies. His troops come together and raise up their way against me and encamp round about my tabernacle; he hath put my brotherly far from me; and my acquaintance are barely estranged from me; my kinfolk have failed, and my familiar friends have forgotten me." All of us go through these experiences. Many of you can say today that the people you were very good friends with in high school, you might not even see them now. The friends, or even talked to them, except at a reunion. The friends that you had in college or trade school or working at a job, you no longer even sometimes converse with them. Things change. People change. Situations change. 15 says, "That they dwell in my house; and my maids count me for a stranger; I am an alien in thy sight. I called my servant, and he gave me no answer; I entreated him with my mouth; my breath is strange to my life, though I entreated for the children's sake of my own body. Yea, young children despised me; I arose, and they spake against me; all my inward friends abhorred me; and they whom I loved are turned against me. My bone cleaved to my skin and to my flesh, and I am exced with the skin of my teeth. Have pity upon me; have pity upon me." He's saying to his friends, "Oh ye my friends, for the hand of God hath touched me; why do ye persecute me as God and are not satisfied with my flesh?" He's saying, you know, how doleful are Job's words now, his complaints? What is the fire of hell but the wrath of God? Seared consciousness will feel it hereafter, but do not fear it now. Every creature is that to us which God makes it to be. Yet this does not excuse Job's relations and his friends. How uncertain is his friendship of men! But if God be our friend, he will not fail us in time of need. What little reason do we have to indulge the body? Which after all, our care is consumed by diseases it has in itself. Job recommends himself to the compassion of his friends and justly blames their harshness. It is very distressing to one who loves God to be bereaved at once or out with control of an inward consolation. Yet if this is more, come upon a believer, it does not weaken the proof of his being a child of God and an heir of glory. Job is saying, wait, you're my friends. Verse 21, "Have pity upon me; have pity upon me" because you are my friends. Don't you realize that the hand of God itself has touched me? Let's continue with verse 23. "Oh, that my words were now written; oh, that they were printed in a book; that they were graven with an iron pen and lead in the rock forever." For I know, and this verse is certainly a very, very pertinent highlighter, verse 25. We have heard this in scriptures. We've heard people preach this. We've heard people sing this. So this is a very familiar verse that should be highlighted in Job 19 chapter, verse 25. "For I know that my redeemer liveth." Hallelujah! Through all of this, all that I've gone through, all that you're saying, Job is saying, "For I know that my redeemer liveth and that he shall stand at the latter day upon the earth; and though after my skin worsens..." Ma, ma, ma. "...and the worm, that my skin, the worms will destroy this body; yet in my flesh shall I see God, whom I shall see for myself; and mine eyes shall behold and not another, though my reins be consumed within me. But ye should say, 'Why persecute we him? Seeing the root of the matter is found in me? Be ye afraid of the sword; for wrath bringeth the punishments of the sword, that ye may know there is judgment.'" When we look at this and end with that 29th verse, it's telling us that the Spirit of God at this time seems to have powerfully wrought on the mind of Job. Here he witnessed a good confession, declares the soundness of his faith and the assurance of hope when he simply states, "For I know that my redeemer liveth and that he shall stand at the latter day upon the earth." Here is how, here is how Christ is letting us know that much of Christ in heaven, and that he is saying that these things are here, declaring plainly that he sought the better country, that is, the heavenly. The heavenly. He's looking for another place. Job was taught of God to believe in a living redeemer, to look for the resurrection of the dead and the life of the world that is yet to come. He confronted himself with the expectations of these. Job is assured that the redeemer of sinners from the yoke of Satan and the condemnation of sin was his redeemer. It's the same redeemer. And the expected salvation through him, and that he was a living redeemer. I know that he lived. Let us now look at chapter 20 as we continue with Job this morning. We are looking at chapter 20, and as we're looking at chapter 20 this morning, we are going to find out that Zophar is now going to answer Job. Zophar, he was a Mermanite, and he's coming into play now to answer Job. Zophanar speaks in verses 1 through 9 of the short joy of the wicked. And so let us look as we continue. Job 20 chapter, verses 1 through 9. "Then answered Zophar, the Mermanite, and said, 'Therefore, do my thoughts cause me to answer; and for this I make haste. I have heard the check of my reproach, and the spirit of my understanding causeth me to answer. Knoweth thou not this of all? Since man was placed upon earth, that the triumphing of the wicked is short and the joy of the hypocrite but for a moment? Though his excellency mount up to the heavens and his head reach unto the clouds, yet he shall perish forever like his own done. They which have seen him shall say, 'Where is he?'" "He shall fly away as a dream and shall not be found; yea, he shall be chased away as a vision of the night." Verse 9, "The eye also which saw him shall see him no more; neither shall his place any more behold him." Zophar's discourse is upon the certain misery of the wicked. The triumph of the wicked and the glory of the hypocrite are fleeting. The pleasures and gains of sin bring disease and pain. They end in remorse, anguish, and ruin. Disassembled piety is double iniquity, and the ruin that attends it will be accordingly. So as we are continuing now, we're going to read Job 20, verses 10 through 22. "His children shall seek to please the poor; and his hands shall restore their goods." Remember, this is Zophar speaking to Job. "His bones are full of the sin of his youth, which shall lie down with him in the dust; though wickedness be sweet in his mouth, though he hide it not under his tongue; though he spare it and forsake it not, but keep it still within his mouth; yet his meat in his bowels is turned; it is the gall of ass within him. He has swallowed down riches, and he shall vomit them up again; God shall cast them out of his belly; he shall suck the poison of ass; the viper's tongue shall slay him; he shall not see the rivers, the floods, the brooks of honey and butter; that which he laboreth before shall be restored and shall not shallow it down. According to his substance shall the restitution be, and he shall not rejoice therein; because he hath oppressed and hath forsaken the poor; because he hath violently taken away an house, taken it away, an house which he builded none. Surely he shall not feel quietness in his belly; he shall not save of that which he desired; there shall none of his meat be left; therefore shall no man look for his goodness.'" Verse 22, "In the fulness of his sufficiency he shall be in streets; every hand of the wicked shall come upon him." This miserable condition of the wicked man in this world is fully set forth. The lusts of the flesh are here, called the sins of his youth. His hiding it and keeping it under his tongue denotes concealment of his beloved lusts and delight therein. But he who knows what is in his heart knows what is under his tongue and will discover it. The love of the world and of the wealth, also the wickedness a man sets in his heart upon these things. Violence and injustice, these sins bring God's judgments upon nations and families. So therefore, Zophar is telling Job that this is what's happening to him because of what he has done, whether he was a young boy, or what he has done right now, or he's doing wrong, that all of these things have come into play with him going through these things. It's, Zophar is saying that sin is turned into God, and it's saying that nothing is more bitter. It will prove to him poison, and so will unlawful gains be. Zophar is letting him know, but to be forced to restore by the horrors of a despairing conscience, as Judas was, has no benefit and comfort attending it. He's just saying, Job, you know, you messed up, and you're just sowing all of this now. You're reaping all that you have messed up in. Verse 23 says, "When he is about to fill his belly, God shall cast the fury of his wrath upon him and shall rain it upon him while he is eating. He shall flee from the iron weapon, and the bow of steel shall strike him through. It is dawn, and cometh out of the body, yea, the glittering sword cometh out of his gall; terrors are upon him; all darkness shall be hid in his secret places; a fire not blown shall consume him; it shall go ill with him that is left in his tabernacle. The heavens shall reveal his iniquity, and the earth shall rise up against him." Verses 28 and 29, "The increase of his house shall depart, and his good shall flow away in the day of his wrath." This is the portion of a wicked man from God and the heritage appointed unto him by God. You see, Zophar has described the vexations which attend wicked practices. He shows their ruins from God's wrath. There is no offense against this, but in Christ, who is the only covert from the storm and tempest. He's referring back to Isaiah 32, chapter, verse 2. And Zophar concludes that this is the portion of a wicked man from God. He's calling Job wicked, and Job has done no wrong. It is allotted him. Never was any doctrine better explained or worse applied than this by Zophar, who intended to prove Job as a hypocrite. Ma, ma, ma. Isn't it amazing sometimes that people can try to find the worst in us? One view of this of Jesus directed by the Holy Spirit and by him suitably impressed upon our souls will quell a thousand carnal reasonings about the sufferings of our faith. But what we have to be mindful of today, beloveds, is that suffering, it does bring joy. When we think about the suffering that Christ did on Calvary for us, this is still nothing compared to what Jesus did, being whipped all night long, being across flesh from his bones. But yet he said not a mumbling word because he had purpose. So when we're going through our trials and tribulations, we should too, should have purpose. Purpose of knowing that God is still with us and that he does not make mistakes. Verse 21 this morning, as we are concluding. "But Job answered and said..." Now this is Job answering Zophar, the Mermanite. "Hear diligently my speech, and let this be your consolation; suffer me that I may speak; suffer me that I may speak; and after that I have spoken, mark on; as for me is my complaint; is my complaint to man; and if it were so, why should not my spirit be troubled? Mark me and be astonished, and lay your hand upon your mouth; even when I remember, I am afraid and trembling, taking hold of my flesh." He's saying here, because remember, Job is entreating attention. He's entreating attention during this time. And Job is coming closer to the question that is in dispute. This was whether outwardly prosperity is a mark of the true church and the true members of it, so that ruin of a man's prosperity proves him a hypocrite? Ha, ma, ma, ma. As we continue, verse 7, "Wherefore do the wicked live, become old, yea, or mighty in power? Their seed is established in their sight with them and their offspring before their eyes; their houses are safe from fear; neither is the rod of God upon them; their bull gendereth and faileth not; their cow calbeeth and casteth not their cat; they send forth their little ones like a flock; and their children dance. They take the tremble and harp and rejoice at the sound of the organ; they spend their days in wealth and in a moment go down to the grave. Therefore they say unto God, 'Depart from us; for we desire not the knowledge of thy ways; what is the Almighty that we should serve him? And what profit should we have if we pray unto him?'" Verse 16 says, "Lo, their good is not in their hand; the counsel of the wicked is far from me." Job is saying here that remarkable judgments are sometimes brought upon notorious sinners, but not always. Wherefore it is so. This is the day of God's patience, and in some way or another, he makes use of the prosperity of the wicked to serve his own counsels, while it ripens them for ruin. But the chief reason is because he will make it appear here in another world. These prospering sinners make light of God and religion, and is because they have so much of this world, they have no need to look after another. But religion, beloveds, is not a vain thing. If it be so to us, we may thank ourselves for resting on the outside of Job. Job showing this. And as we look now, we don't have time to go through everything, but as you continue to read Job 17 to 26, you're going to learn that Job had described the prosperity of the wicked people. In these verses, he opposes that this is what his friends had maintained about their certain ruin in this life. ruin in this life. He reconciles this to the holiness and justice of God. Even while they prosper, thus they are light and worthless, of no account with God or with wise men. And you're going to read that these differences in this world are not worth perplexing ourselves about. We need to keep holding on and trusting in the God of our salvation. And then verses twenty-seven to thirty-four, as you have read them, it's simply telling that Job opposes the opinions of his friends, that the wicked are sure to fall into visible and remarkable ruin, and none but the wicked upon which principle they condemn Job as wicked. Turn to whom you will, he said, you will find that the punishment of sinners is designed more for the others' world than for his. Job is still declaring that death closes his prosperity. It is a poor encouragement to die that others that had died before us. He's saying that a man that dies is a true courage, and it's with faith to remember that Jesus Christ died and He was laid in the grave, not only before us, but for us. Job is reminding them. And then next week, we're going to read chapters twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, because what we're going to do, Eliphas in chapter twenty-two is accusing Job of certain things. He's asking, can a man be profitable unto God? And so he's asking certain questions. But Job in chapters twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-four, he is going to answer and tell them what he feels. So we're going to read for our homework, chapters twenty-three, twenty-four, and then in chapter twenty-five, Biladad, the Shunamite, is going to answer Job. We're going to move more quickly as we get to near the end, because in Job's final speeches, we're going to cover those eight, nine chapters in one week, and then we're going to be moving more expeditiously to the end to find out what happens to Job. Thank you so much for joining us today. Thank you for being a part of Bible study. It is so important not to just pick the Word up on Sunday and read while the pastor or the preacher is ministering to you, but it is vitally important to take time out to study the Word for yourself. And even when you're sitting down, because all of us might not have iPhones or iPads, so it might behoove us to have some fun sometimes and go to the table of content, look at the books of the Bible, and just take a few minutes out of the day and start going through them. Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, Joshua, Judges, Ruth, and just continue to do maybe five or 10 a day, and you'll be surprised, so that if you have to refer back to the paper book, you in your mind know those sixty-six books of the Bible, and you will know whether to turn to the front, to the middle, or to the back of your Bible. Be encouraged on this beautiful day, and know that we too should be encouraged whenever we read this book of Job, to see a man who did not give up on God, because he knew that the Lord was still on his side. God bless you today.